All right, that's great. Well, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's first order of business. We do have a couple cases on the agenda today. The first case, well, let's go ahead and hear the new one first, if you don't mind, John. If I change the order. Thirteen, number thirteen dash oh three, Gordon Gifford. Ten, one zero five one zero Porter Lane. It's a lot split request. This falls under Athens City Code Title 21. John, can you give us a brief summary of the lot split?
Yes, this is a piece of property owned by Mr. Gifford that, like you said, at the one zero five one zero Porter Lane. It's in a three mile. He was required to come through here because the residual property is less than five acres. It's approximately an eight point six acre tract which is being split. Two point six acres is currently have, currently has his residence on it that he's at now. And wants to split off six point, pretty much six acres to build a new residence for himself. It does meet all the road frontage with the depth ratio, number splits, it has engineer's approval, Health Department approval for septic and the registered surveyor. So, this one meets all the requirements, but it's required to go through planning commission because, like I said, it's less than five acres.
Right, right. And just because it's less than five acres doesn't mean that it's a variance. It just means it can't, it has to go through the planning commission.
Okay, if I'm looking at this, if I'm reading it correctly, it sounds like there's actually an easement for a driveway for one of the parcel, which is to the south, I guess west. And then as a right of way, similar right of way there. What's that right of way for? Do you know offhand?
I do not, but they, Mr. Gifford is here. They are on the existing parcel, the two point six. The new parcel is a six point zero acre lot, so one that doesn't have anything on it. So, maybe Mr. Gifford can answer the question as to that right of way easement.
Yeah, the one to the right, like a-
But, Mr. Gifford, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just either podium or table, we just need to pick up the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah. I believe that there's two. There's the easement that goes with the L. Is that the one you're referring to?
Easement along existing drive to Jane Sheets, I think?
Yes.
Okay.
Our neighbor behind us is, there's a lot back there that has no road frontage.
Okay.
So, we share that adjoining driveway with our neighbor to the right and the neighbor behind us. I believe the, the one that goes through as an L there-
Yeah.
The one that goes through the property, you know, speaking with my surveyor and even the folks that had the residence before, I, I believe maybe in order for them to have that lot back there, and you guys know more about the regulations than I do, maybe there's a certain width that they have to have as far as, like, in order for them to access the frontage potentially. And I believe if you would've taken it along the driveway, it might've, like, gone into our house. So, I think that maybe that's why they added that L there. There's nothing there currently. It's just the road. You'd have a tough time accessing the road from there. But again, it is still part of the, you know, the property.
Yeah, so your, your house is right there by Porter Lane, almost. I mean, it looks like it's probably just south of the right of way, I would imagine, like-
Yeah.
Here, based on the aerial map.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the lot split that you're proposing is going to split off the present house, which is on the two point six.
Yeah.
Correct.
And you intend to buy, build something on six?
Yeah.
Okay, which has adequate area for septic, I guess?
Yep.
Okay. And in terms of, and the Health Department signed off on this, that's what I'm hearing?
Yep.
So, the two point six has its own leach bed and all the requirements?
And it's on its, remaining on its property and meets all the requirements, yes.
Okay, I guess the question was asking right away in case it was some kind of, I wouldn't expect utilities under there, but you have to ask the question or find out. Because, again, it probably is to give a frontage, or rather, access without using the existing drive.
Yeah.
And that was my concern, what would be the effect?
Only a question I really have, I mean, isn't, I guess, it, there's, the answer doesn't really matter on this board's decision, but just out of curiosity, what, is it based on the topography of the site and how the lot split is being done? I guess my confusion comes is, usually when you see these, it's pretty, pretty quick clutch, but then this one's kind of wrapping around the-
I know the back half.
Yeah.
The, the back part where it kind of goes like that. He said he was following a topography line.
Okay.
There was like a creek that kind of flowed that way, so he was kind of using the lay of the land-
Okay.
To get the back line, as far as-
That was my assumption.
The original diagonal that goes there, yeah, there's really not, I mean, you, we want it to the left of, you know, I guess, whatever direction, west of our septic there, and that one was just kind of an-
Okay.
Arbitrary line, I guess.
Any other questions? I would like to put forward a motion to accept this lot split request.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of acceptance, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay.
Got your lot split.
Sure.
Thank you. The other case on our agenda is number thirteen oh two. This is a new case, but we have had it as a communication beforehand. And this is from Charles Richmond. It is twenty-two Mulligan Road. It is also a lot split request, again, falling under Athens City Code Title 21. Mr. Paskey, would you also provide us a, maybe not as brief summary? Since I know the planning commission did have a number of questions when this was brought up as communications and trying to figure out where those sort of lie.
Right. Well, as we know, this one's a little bit more trickier. It's kind of a, I guess you call it a semi-V shaped parcel now, one large lot, that has a single-family residence on it and a pretty well dilapidated garage. The request is to, to the, I guess you call it to the south of the existing house to establish one parcel, which would be eighty-five point five feet wide. That would be parcel three, if you're looking at the preliminary survey. And then parcel two would be also an eighty-five point five foot wide parcel for his current residence. And then the residual would be what is parcel one. That'd be nearly, almost an acre lot, combining an old triangular shaped parcel to the rear and the residual of this first parcel. And some of the problems that are dealing with on this one is the parcel one would not have any street frontage onto Mulligan Avenue. And if you remember, that is a platted street in the old Allendale subdivision called Oak Street that goes back, that, that ends into, into the freeway there. So, we're looking at an issue there that if we gave the, we can't really give it a Mulligan Road address without affecting a lot of property owners due to no lack of street numbers. So, we can look at giving it a, a new street name, so to speak, for the Mulligan, for the Oak Street, Street. And I got comments here from Andy Stone, Director of Public Works, and, and with my, my comments as well, is to rename the platted Oak Street to a new name, but without city maintenance. So, basically be a driveway, anything that they'd have to do, any cost on that street would be borne by the property owner. So, but even though it would be a named street, and, but it would be their responsibility, since that would be the only parcel that's on that street. The utilities are not an issue, but it is possible that the rear property, parcel one, may need a lift station. Paul Logan and I visited the site earlier this week. It's rather steep. Both parcels are, that parcel one, as well as where the existing house is, and parcel three, are rather steep. The two lots just to the south, one oh six and one oh seven, are currently for sale. They're rather steep as well. So, we've got a number of issues going on here with the grade, with the street frontage, with the addressing. And then, obviously, lots two and three would also require a variance from council on the one to three with, with the depth ratio as well. But the lots do conform with the bulk controls of the city's code today on width and square footage, so.
It's just depth to width ratio?
Depth to width ratio is one to three, which these are a little bit greater than that, so.
Okay. I see you have GIS there up right now. Is that what I'm looking at right there, Paul?
Yeah.
Do you, I was trying to determine what the soil type was. It said WMD, which is, D is a slope. What is the, is it slip prone soil?
Be Westmoreland.
Westmoreland, is it?
I think the W is, yeah. There is no doubt that this would require, if developed, and that without any question, would require soil and, soil and water, soil study, and engineered foundation, without a question.
Right.
My indication that there is already some soil slippage occurring there. You can almost see where it's rolled a little bit when we went out and walked it. Plus, the indication of, indication of some cracked foundations on the, even your house, I think. It's got some patchwork on it.
That's been that way for, we've stabilized that with abutments inside that.
Right.
Mr. Richman, I presume, if you don't mind either going up to the podium or the table, we, we may have some questions in that way and picking up a microphone. Thank you.
All right.
So, you, you were saying that your foundation, that cracking has been there for a long time, hasn't changed?
Yeah, it's been there for, since I bought the house, the previous owner had stabilized the basement with, basically, giant bridge abutments inside the basement, and it has been stabilized. I have not seen any movement.
Okay.
Again, to verify that any construction on these lots would require some engineered foundation drawings and soil and waters, soil report as well.
Right. Now, how does that work, John? Is that something, I mean, you know, you have to get a building permit. If, if you're doing a house from the city, at least, again, not from the state, but that, that would be something you would request then at the time?
Any, any lot that looks like this, that I feel that would probably have a slippage situation, I'll require the property owner to get in touch with soils and water. And then they would go out and do test bores, and they would then put together a report and give it back to the property owner, indicating what, definitely what type of soil is, what severity of the slippage there is, and then request that the house have a designed, engineered foundation. And then I would require the property owner to submit that with their application for the, when they submit a use permit for the house. I want, I want to see that that's actually been engineered, so that would be a requirement upon submittal.
I mean, I, I, I'm in agreement with you, John, absolutely, on making those requests. If this were to be approved and then someone were to develop a property there. I mean, I do feel that the lot sizes proposed for two and three are, you know, based on the plat map that's provided, they're conforming to its adjacent properties. Again, I do understand that would require a variance from city council on the one to three with the depth ratio. So, I, two and three, they are, I mean, we have hills in the city, and they, to varying degrees of success in developing those properties, as we can see recently with the slippage that over at Coates Run again. So, I mean, it is definitely a development, to develop these parcels would be at someone else's risk. I can definitely understand that. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, looking at this, again, this is an R1 zone. We saw this last year sometime.
On August fifteenth.
August fifteenth, okay.
Yes.
I'm kind of reluctant to see this happen, and I say that for a couple reasons. It is conforming lot size, except for the shape. And no, it's an R1, and therefore, R1s are, in theory, the same. I'm worried about the slip prone, the topography, the requirement of actually initiating a new road, just a dead end road. This is not a road that we want to-
Yeah, I'm still concerned with that. Again, yeah, two and three.
Yeah, well, okay. And I'm, I went up there and looked at it earlier today as well. This is about the third time I've been up there looking. It will require some shifting of addresses, I believe. I may be wrong in that.
If we rename Oak Street, which all this takes council action and give it a new name, it would have its own new number, and then we can leave all the parcels or residences as they currently are. The difficulty would be is if a house were to be built on parcel three-
Right, that's-
Then there is no number left for, available for lots one oh six and one oh seven, which are currently for sale. So, somewhere down the line, even still, we've got an addressing issue, no matter what happens there, if, if parcel three is granted.
That's what I thought.
Well, it's, it does, it's a tough thing, because, I mean, I just, I don't think in this present, you know, in the next ten years, no one's going to develop on these sites. Unless you decide that you're going to develop these sites. But I don't think it's, it's going to be a long shot to sell off the two and three parcels and expect someone to spend the amount of money that would be necessary-
I would agree with that.
For those sites. So, I, you know, it'd be sort of, you know, I guess if the planning commission were to agree, and then you would go forward to city council, it may just be an exercise in sort of futility of, you have the lot split, but it didn't change anything. They're still going to exist in those sites. It's just a line drawn in some league.
Very strong possibility.
So, it's a difficult-
It may take, yeah, more than ten years before anything would ever happen. I acknowledge that.
Absolutely. As far as the Oak Street one, yeah, I guess I'm, it's, you know, it's this either or. I don't like the either or situations where we're going to have a, a city street, but the city is not going to be able to maintain it to, just in order to fix the postal address.
Okay, what I'm looking down the road here is that it has topography problems. I can see chopping off parcel three, even though the width to depth ratios off. It's got the conforming size. If you look at, again, it's, in theory, if you blanket everything, and this is the concept we have out there, all R1s are the same. This R1 is really, in this area, is really considered larger lots in general. Also, the Mulligan Street is not, is a fairly, I wouldn't say narrow. It's probably up to spec in terms of size, but it has a lot more traffic than there. I, I would rather see less density here, or rather not, and, you know, let density, you know, and, was it encourage density on Mulligan Street if possible. Especially if it's going to take, require a new addressing, a new street. And realize, somebody ten years from now who wants to buy this trapsoil shaped one is going to buy it with the idea of saying, oh, I can do something here. And then all of a sudden be stuck with a bill for half the road, or whatever it costs to bring up the road to spec on a, on a one-person address road.
Right.
Okay, so we're, it's not like we're trying to make a new thoroughfare to someplace like Route fifty or anything, or even to a new development.
Right.
So, we're actually, you know, we're putting a, an appendix on a Mulligan Street. You know, a useless little tail of road to, to Mulligan. And again, I've been on Mulligan. I walked it just this morning, and there is quite a bit of traffic there already. To say, let's add more by splitting a bunch of lots here. Even though it's R1, obviously it works, except for the topography and the weight risks to depth ratio. There are, there are various flavors of R1 out there. And I want to tell you truth, when I was on Zonia Board of Appeals, you know, you used to rail the fact that you had to just go through the finances, you couldn't make the changes like this. And now that I'm on the planning, I'd like to see that we're not going to create something that we might require us to build a, you know, a hundred-foot road to nowhere, a lift station involved, and, and increase traffic with no sidewalk.
I will, I believe that there is a sewer line on the bottom end of the property that runs through the, through the gully of the property. When I went to the, the, what's opposite of the planning, or opposite of the code office?
Engineering Public Works.
When I went to the Engineering Public Works, I did, I went to the maps, and they did indicate that there was a sewer line on the bottom end of the property. So, I don't know, and it was not a storm sewer. They assured me that. And I really don't know why there would be a lift station if there's a bottom sewage line on the bottom of the property. I mean, you can walk out there, there is manholes. And I thought they were storm sewers, but they assured me that, no, they were sewer.
That can very easily just, when I met with Andy on this yesterday, he was thinking it was on Mulligan. And if you wanted to put a finished basement in this type of situation, you'd have to pump it up and out. So, if it is one down in there, then, and then, it wouldn't, yeah.
It does run down through the-
It's as possible, possible.
Well, yeah, there's also a question capacity down there, too.
Right.
Obscure question, John. I don't know if you'd be able to respond to this. If you look at the tax plat map that's provided as kind of the basis, so we can see the Oak Street and what the lining is of the, was of the property. It wasn't a tract number this lot, nor was it a numbered lot? Because you see one oh five up at the top, sort of where section nine is, that number, and continue to one oh five, and then it continues to one oh six in what would be the property to the south of parcel three. So, it wasn't a tract, it just was an unidentified-
I see what you're saying, yeah. Unless, unless it wasn't, I don't know.
Where did, I guess where did it come from?
Well, again, it may be Oak Street was a functioning street at one time before they put the bypass in there.
It was a functioning street before the bypass was, did come in.
Yeah, I think the chief troxel said it used to be part of Harmony Road, the other end of Harmony Road. But I'm not sure if that's the case or not. Again, this was a discussion at staff meeting, so we weren't looking at the map closely.
Yeah, I mean, but these other ones where someone already owned the property, and it wasn't considered part of the Allendale development, they have a name, like, you know, Pinkerton, or you see Beasley, or Devorn, but it's, for some reason, that one's just an unmarked. You know, you could maybe assume that it was part of that Tracy Evan, and sometimes-
It may have been part of tract number six, or tract number, what is it, five right there?
Right.
At one time.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, yeah, it did, it almost got platted as a byproduct of Allendale. Everything else was platted but that one, and it was the residual that was left.
Right. I'd say the lots that you see just to the south of it, starting at one oh six, is it?
Yeah.
Probably are not even part of Allendale subdivision. I would say it would be the actual platted lots that you see off the streets off of Oak Street there, Curtis, Park, Pleasant View. They would all be, were, were part of Allendale. But my guess is the actual lots there on Mulligan were not. But again, it's a guess by looking at this.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we got to here.
Residual.
Highway changes.
Yeah, no, I- I can't imagine Oak Street went through, because that-
Well, according to sixty-one, this one here, it looks like it's-
Yeah.
If you try to follow my-
No, I see how you got the plat on it.
Right, Oak Street used to run like this.
I just can't imagine they would take the road out that far when they put in the freeway.
You could see all this used to be, there used to be a stretch of residential back there.
Right.
And they took all that out when they built the highway.
Was that all, do you know if that, I mean, was it developed, or was it just platted?
Those may not have been somewhere, because I know-
It's always been my understanding that there was residential there.
Okay.
I don't have anything to back that.
From where it was, I know.
You'd have to look at an old auto map, like circa, what's the date on this one, sixty-one? Is it fifty-one? I can't read it. Sixty-one?
I can't read it.
Maybe fifty.
Sixty-four, sixty-one.
It says April nine nineteen-
Oh, it might be fifty-four.
It should be a fifty, oh, is that a four?
Yeah, I think it's a four.
Yeah, it's a fifty-four, probably. All right.
I have no problem with the split off of parcel three, but I have trouble with the other portion. And again, this is all very steep, and we require a lot of work. In other words, this, this trapsoil one, it's nice to say in ten years, somebody's going to come along, purchase it, find out they need to do a soil, soil study, have a new road, or repair a road, and maybe even put a lift station in. And that garage is coming down, I assume? It is by itself, I guess, right?
If, well, the storm in beginning of July is what destroyed that, or partially destroyed it. And if we have to, if we, if I get the approval for the lot split, then it will have to come down. Because there can't be any, it's my understanding that there can't be any existing structure-
Accessory structure on a lot.
On an undeveloped lot, but-
Correct.
Even as it sits, we're going to have to talk.
I understand that.
Yeah, a question about the, well, the woman who came, spoke before us-
She was worried about, actually, she was using it as a, kind of like a parking driveway. But she's actually, her, if you look at the map, her driveway's off to the side there.
It's sort of going in a diagonal, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Was she also concerned about her mailing address?
That was one of the concerns. Yes, the changes, where we'd have to shift things around.
But we're not doing that now with her. She would, she would remain the same. Everything's okay on that. As, as-
With parcel-
What I was proposing, you know, or I wouldn't say proposing, but-
If Oak Street were to become a postal address-
Yeah, I don't really like speaking for a member who's not here, but Ms. May did come in and speak to me about it. And her suggestion was, was just leave that alone and rename Oak Street and give it its own address, if that's, and not mess with her. So, just forwarding what she had told me.
That would still give you a problem with the parcel three reassignments.
Parcel three, and then the two lots-
And it's existing ones as well that aren't numbered, don't have a postal address, that if these ones that were for sale got developed, we'd still have a problem with numbering.
Correct. Though what I need to look into, which I cannot answer, I don't know if Paul can there for me right now, is if the house at twenty-four, twenty-six-
Yes.
Do they own the same, do they own the two parcels that are for sale?
I believe so.
I, that was my understanding that they do own it.
If they do, then I can make them change that address at twenty-six. And we, next house down is thirty-eight, so we would-
They do not, I don't believe.
They do not, so.
Twenty-six, it's like it's owned by a resident, last name Dorrell, Durrell. The two vacant lots are owned by a Cooley, it says. Those two are for sale right now.
Correct.
And this is, this one's twenty-six.
And you sell an address-
Twenty-four would have to go.
Twenty-two, twenty-four would have to go into one of these, and then you'd, you'd still be missing. You'd have to start renumbering, assuming development occurs.
Either rough it down the street.
Right.
If everybody enjoys.
So, all right.
I think if you continue forward, there's a lot of undeveloped parcels that potentially could be built. Just if you keep moving down the road. For example, this, well, this is twenty-six, this is thirty-four. So, you could fit two in there. You might just be able to move numbers around right in the stretch.
I thought we'd looked at that.
We all know what fun that is to do, though.
Yeah.
Everybody's always happy.
Well, is it Cooley, who, you said Durrell's the one where there is a property that's developed?
That's at twenty-six, correct.
So, you really, and they don't have a property for sale or something?
No.
The ones in between are the ones.
Yeah, but that's a different, yeah.
It doesn't change anybody's number across the street.
No.
No, those would all be odd numbers.
It may shift a little bit, so there would be-
And technically, there are two lots right there that are for sale. Although, I don't know how anyone could ever develop on just one. And, and, you know, honestly, much can be said about Mr. Richmond's third lot. It's, it's narrow, or not narrow, but to do that type of development, it's not easy. It's not easy.
These two lots that are for sale today are actually steeper.
Yeah, you can see how it keeps creeping up, the tree line.
And I will add that I did put a tremendous amount of landscaping to stabilize the soil, both along the road frontage, and we did put landscaping along the back on parcel one to stabilize. But I, I have never seen any slipping since I've owned the property. And obviously, the trees have gotten bigger, and the ornamental grasses on the, on the steep side of parcel one have increased in size.
That's actually parcel three, according to your survey, the one to the south of your lot. Am I right? Am I wrong?
About the, one where you were talking about the sloping soil, the slumping soil. That's been like that for, since I bought the property. It has not changed. I know that the previous owner did put a garden in of some sort back in there, and we did restabilize it by reseeding it and letting the soil harden up. But- it by reseeding it and letting the soil harden up. But, uh, the parcel one, which would be the one acre lot, we did put a tremendous amount of landscaping along the steepest portion of that. And they have increased, and that draws, keeps water in the soil. I have a tree farm, uh, out in Amesville, so I, I work with trees and soil quite frequently. ODNR, Department of Agriculture.
How long have you owned the parcels? Or how long, when did you buy this?
Uh.
Roughly?
I wanna say early two thousands, two thousand two, two thousand three, perhaps.
On your application, it says two thousand four.
I could be wrong. I was.
Property owner originally. But that's close enough. I mean, two thousand three, two thousand four.
It was somewhere in that timeframe. I'd have to look up through my records, and that's going way, way back.
Uh, I mean, it also seems like if parcel three was developed, you'd probably have to get a variance as far as setback, cause what, the most developable part of land is nearest the street.
Possible. But our code does allow for you to use the established front setback of the other homes on either side, so.
So that you might be able to fit a same-sized house in that, as far as parcel three, if it were to match the size of the house in parcel two.
Still off-street parking, for that, too.
Yeah, I think the car just drops off the hillside now.
Four-wheel requirements, huh?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, this one is, 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 is difficult at best, because I really do feel that we'd create, we'd be creating a situation that would be undevelopable if it was developed. There'd, it'd come at a lot of expense if it was gonna be done right. And even that, there's, there's still no guarantees when it comes to, you know, the soil reports and the slippage that can be experienced on these hillsides. Um, you know, it's, you know, I'd hate to suggest tabling it till we have more members present to get their opinions as well. We do have quorum. A decision can be made by this commission here. RJ?
Well, at this, at this time, would you be willing to accept, like, if the rest of the commission was amenable to, like, separating two and three?
If, if we separated two and three, uh, that would remain the, the.
In other words, just taking three off of the original, is that's what you're saying, right?
Right. Well, just, just not acting on, on one.
Yeah, on the.
Okay, so combining one and two?
Yeah. One and two would not be.
Split.
Split. So I guess that would become the new parcel one, and parcel three would be renamed parcel two. And that, the lot split would be parcel two between parcel one and two there.
That would be a compromise?
Still have to go to council for the variance.
It, it would still have to go to council for the variance, but then we wouldn't not be looking at an issue on two with the Oak Street, whether that even needs to become anything. Because you would still have, um, frontage on Mulligan where that existing house is.
But then these are to disappear.
Um.
Gotcha.
Looking at, I mean, and it's also something, looking at the, go back to the aerial image of the splits. Yeah, I mean, you really can't draw that lot where the, right now, where it's being called parcel three, where that division is occurring. It doesn't seem like it can move much based on, um, side setbacks with any property. I mean, you, you could probably move it a foot or two. But that, where that line is, is probably where it would need to be.
Yeah, there's some conditions here even still. I mean, on, on the, it says preliminary, and it would need still an engineer stamp on the survey. It would still need the architect or the engineer seal or surveyor's seal. Um, I would probably ask, and I haven't spoke with you about this yet, that we, he showed the location of the existing house to confirm that the existing house would have proper setbacks after the split is made. That's not on here yet.
Right.
That's a side setback you're talking about.
Correct. Um, parcel three, as shown on here, obviously, we need a variance for the, with the depth ratio. Parcel one, we got the issue with the road and the addressing or the change in the street, but it may be more feasible to develop than parcel three. So it's.
I would agree with that.
It may be more feasible to develop, but it would be part of, if we combined it with parcel two, you could have your access from Mulligan, um.
You're talking about parcel one and two combined?
Yeah, if one and two combine.
Actually, they are combined.
They, they are now.
Yeah.
If we just don't split, if they remain the same, um, you can only have one residence. It's our one. Either that existing house would have, have to be demolished or raised, and a new house could be built further back, let's say, on what we were looking at as parcel one. But, and I think it makes it a much more developable lot. Now.
That was my original intention, was to raise the house and.
Right. But again, like, I don't see what the point is cutting off on three, because it's, it's not very developable at all. Now, you, you know, we can talk about, we, we can agree to it, and, and you could argue that, well, I have every right to develop something. I, I just don't see what, how it benefits you, other than maybe cutting off, um, some of your taxes. That's.
Uh, it's, it's basically, uh, it's an attempt to recoup my money from the original purchase price. I purchased the property when real estate was very high. I did, I was, my original plan was to raise the house and build a much nicer house. However, with the current real estate market, it really doesn't seem that that's very feasible. So I'm trying to not completely lose my shirt in this situation.
I, I mean, I, I definitely see where you're coming from. I just, from my experience, Mulligan Avenue, you're, you're not gonna be able to size, sell a lot that size. Now, if, you know, you know, if you were to work with probably the, the neighboring parcels that are being sold, if somehow those were to be somehow packaged, I understand they're in different hands. But I mean, a lot that size, maybe there's something you can do up on Mulligan Avenue if they were all combined. But, you know, that's just conjecture, and I, I don't mean to get us sidetracked. But, um, again, I'm, I'm amenable to you splitting, um, one of the parcels off the southern parcel, let's call it. But I, I just don't know what it, what it really does. I mean.
It, it would basically just be leverage for.
I understand what you're saying.
Personnel the house and.
Right.
Attempting to recoup my money.
Could I?
John.
I was just gonna say, um, let's say, I mean, I, lots, parcel two that the house sits on would actually be almost split down the middle, so that the house then becomes on what would be half of two and three.
Mm-hmm.
And then everything else would be parcel one. Now we have frontage on Mulligan. Now we can readdress that Mulligan parcel to, the, the vacant parcel to twenty-two, change the existing house to twenty-four.
Yeah, I mean, that's not crossed my mind, but it's.
I mean, you'd have to come, we'd have to talk about it. It can't be decided today, but.
Right.
Right.
Still talking about moving the house or tearing the house down?
Yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean.
If you can't, if you're doing what you're trying to do and selling the property.
That'd be in three parcels, be in two.
I understand what you're trying to do. But again, if I'm looking at the map here that's been given us, that'd be, you know, to make it work, you really have to, like, cut the house in half, and we've got, we have the old lot and.
Close, possibly. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing.
I have considered something which John is suggesting.
Get a variance for setback.
On that side.
On that, like, get a variance for setback on the north side of the house. You know, you could make it work where you'd have Mulligan frontage. Um, you know, then we'd probably wanna see it go the opposite way, where we, you know, require a larger setback on the north property, so that you're still getting that, you know, twenty feet or so between houses.
What is, um, I, again, you'd still need variances for, no longer for parcel three and combine two, but you probably need one for frontage.
Right.
Distance of frontage. What is it, seventy feet or something?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six?
And.
Would that, I don't think that would make it. Would, would you cut, you cut parcel two in half?
Well, that's the argument now. Does, does parcel three or parcel one require a variance for frontage? Technically, no, because it does have frontage on a platted street. So.
Parcel two and one.
Parcel one.
Because it's combined with parcel two. If you split parcel two in half.
Right.
So we're down from eighty-five feet to forty.
No, no, I'm saying, and giving it to the, giving it to lot three, so it'd be a hundred and twenty-foot lot.
I'm talking about the other side. Parcel one now has reduced frontage, because you've taken parcel two, combined it with parcel one. The eighty-five feet and frontage of parcel two now comes, let's say we cut it in half.
Right.
Parcel two now has forty feet of Mulligan, and parcel one has still zero. Even if you combine, that's still forty feet of frontage for both parcel one and half of parcel two.
Right. What John's saying is, since Oak Street is a platted street, even though it's, there's no, it's not a postal street, then it can have.
It would have a postal.
It'd have partial frontage on Mulligan and partial frontage on Oak Street, which would therefore give it sixty feet, sixty-six feet. I gu, I mean, can you do that, where you have some on one frontage and some on another?
It'd be a corner lot.
Okay.
It's a corner lot.
And what, an assumption would be the postal address would be on Mulligan and that, the smaller frontage.
Still, you're talking about taking the house and cutting it in half, or very.
Unless you're very close, then you'd have to get a variance, but maybe it's a more sellable property now, cause there's a house on it, as opposed to a property without a house that would be close to impossible to develop. I don't, I don't know. I think it requires further discussion between the applicant and our code director of code.
And it's very likely that it would still require variances. I mean, without known. The house isn't platted on here. Having the house platted on here would help us a lot, I think, if it was drawn on here.
So it sounds, okay. So it sounds like there's no motion to actually do this?
No, I, I don't think there's gonna be a motion to do this. Um, I, I don't have one, you don't have one, RJ, or you? Yeah.
So we either.
I would put a motion to table this discussion until, um, the applicant and John have a little more time to discuss.
I'll second that.
All right. I do, we do appreciate, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
I understand.
But we don't wanna, you know, there's no point in us, like I said, agreeing to something that, you know, doesn't have any benefit to the city and could cause more trouble to you than, you know, than you wanna get into. So I, I think this is probably the best for all of us. Uh, do you have questions, though?
Uh, not at this point.
Do we need to take a vote on the tabling?
Uh, yeah, we do. Should, for, for procedure. Uh, any further discussion before a vote?
No.
All right. All those in favor, favor tabling discussion on the lot split on Mulligan Road? Say aye.
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 Any opposition? All right. If there's no further discussion, that's all we have for cases today. Um, communications, we did not put any on the agenda because of having a number of cases today. But if anyone wants to interject, please do. Reports from our city planner and director of development and code enforcement. Anything for today?
Uh, just one brief statement, um, for the planning commission. Uh, we did have a public meeting or a meeting last week with, uh, ODNR, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, with respect to those updated flood maps we've been talking about. I'm expecting there will be a public countywide meeting for affected property owners at the end or middle of May. There are some changes we'll be seeing in the city of Athens. They're still in very preliminary form, and ODNR is saying they're still double checking a few things. So we're not sure what the nature of those changes will be. But likely, we'll see some properties added to the flood plain, some taken out. And we might see some of these other lines shifting around with our floodway and other things.
That's supposed to be, I'm sorry, Anna.
No, go ahead. No.
That's, that, um, will take place in May, that they'll have kind of a presentation.
Yeah, that'll be a preliminary, like an open house, where they just show the draft of what they've done. And then there's a, there's a legal process, like advertising the changes in the federal register, because it is coming from, uh, Federal Emergency Management Agency. Uh, roughly, we would have adoption within about fourteen or fifteen months from today, based on the legal timeframe it has to go through for review and appeal and, and all of that as needed.
Okay. That's always curious.
Yeah. It is a nice package of data that they're providing us as supplemental. They did show off some of that. For example, um, they've, they've pinpointed approximate heights of a hundred-year flood event, um, all through the flood plain as it hits in Athens. So if you're a property owner on, say, Morris Avenue, or on Sunnyside or somewhere, and you are within the hundred-year flood plain, um, the data sets are giving us will basically say, well, a hundred-year flood event, water will be two-point-seven feet above ground level at your address.
I see.
So all of that information is extremely useful for conveying flood risk information to, uh, the community. So, um, there are some good parts to this package. A lot of people probably, you know, as flood, flood move and, and people get at it or withdrawn from it, um, it's not always a fun process to hear that you're going to have to pay flood insurance. But some of the data they'll be giving us is very, is going to be really useful.
They will be forwarding you the maps, I think, of more detail, or is that still supplementary, they don't wanna give it to you?
Uh, I, yeah, they, we did not, we weren't provided any paper at that meeting. I did ask for, um, digital data, so we can use our, our geographic information system to can, to start reviewing this with elected officials and, um, commission members. Uh, they have not provided that to me yet, but I was assured that I'll be getting that soon.
In terms of the natural hazard mitigation plan, will that require any type of re, uh, reformulation of that? Cause I think part of that package is determined of how much impact.
Yeah, it, it, that might, quite possibly, yeah.
We have to check.
Don't know how to answer that question immediately. But yeah, I would think if, if there's major changes to the flood plain or the floodway, um, we might have to look at that, especially with respect to evacuation routes and, um, emergency services during flood events. So.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Any questions for, all right, John?
Um, well, excuse me. Um, next Tuesday evening, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. We currently have two cases on the agenda. I apologize, I forgot to bring my list with me, so I don't remember the addresses. But one of them is on Morris Avenue. It is for a, uh, basically to have, I wouldn't call it a duplex. The existing residence has a garage that the owner lives above the garage, and the house, um, the son lives in, and they're wishing to make it into a rental. But the garage itself already has a rental license on it. So there's a lot of trickiness into this, as to how many people. There's some medical-related issues here. Um, so I'm gonna try to get some further answers from the applicants prior to sending it to VZA. Um, but it is on the agenda, so.
So when you say it's a rental, the garage is rental, but the house is not?
That is correct. The garages, the garage has a rental permit on it. The house was owner occupied. The owner has, now resides in the garage unit. The occup, the owner's son lives in the house, and now he wants to bring in roommates, um, somewhat for medical reasons. Um, but they requested, would not using that, and want to apply still to make it into a rental. With three tenants, which would actually put three, four non-relatives in one house, plus you already have a duplex, or the garage, garage unit. And then brings in parking problems there, too.
Yeah.
Currently, it has five parking spaces, but based on that, it would need seven. Um, then they haven't showed any proposal how they wanna do that. So it's, uh, they, they need to give us more information.
Okay.
To how they wanna do that. They haven't given us directly exactly which way they wanna go with this. If it's gonna be medical related, a temporary use, or whatever. So that's what I'm gonna try to find out before Tuesday night.
So they're either gonna have a variance or conditional temporary use?
Correct.
Okay.
I think their initial request, obviously, is to have a variance for four unrelated in one house, and leave the garage as a rental in our one. So.
Okay.
Be quite a variance.
Correct. Um, the second one is the, uh, the Public Defender's Building, owned by Mr. Valentour on Court Street, is requesting to turn some of the upstairs into apartments. It's a change of use, so therefore it's a setback variance request. It does have the parking for it. So.
Okay.
So that, that's a setback issue on that one.
All right. Thank you both. Uh, opportunities for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda? All right. Announcements and other business. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March twenty-first, uh, at noon in the, the same chamber.
Mm-hmm.
City Council chamber. Uh, any other announcements?
Nope. It's adjourned.
All right. This meeting's now adjourned. Thank you.